So we stand, we wait for Yunga, we take out We in on that tour, we are sitting, taking session this morning What's your, uh, little friend where you go? Just, uh, one morning, we do tour, see if they are okay? Wait there long, let us see if they do See, that's it, my Lord, yeah Ellele toa! Gonna be ready for our second session, uh Elele toa! Tameyoma! And toya fia wa yene swu tayao?
Last time
Amen On pesen moa mua, we in on that tour, we take out What a friend we have in Jesus What a friend we have in Jesus Oh, our sins are great to bear What a privilege is to carry Everything to God is free All our peace of the Lord Oh, what a peace we have for the faith Oh, what he has made me here Oh, because he do not carry me Everything to God is free Every doubt and temptation And we try those hands to change He is in trouble anyway We should never need his side He is taken to the Lord And we find a friend so faithful Who will hold on sorrows share Jesus knows our every weakness Take it to the Lord in grace Oh, yes, oh, never give away Atze tala meina Oh, amasana e tsüli Oh, sa so ma fa si a Oh, Yosef Oh, ma lema wa osef Oh, ma lema wa osef Oh, ma lema e nevi ne Oh, la la, yes, oh, no far Ya, ze iya ri sa sa do Amen, amen E uwi reso, sani, eto ma upeare nofo letua yati oye, ma Amen E uwi reso, oh, esami Oh, mi tia lela, iya Oh, lela ni, la su ma pea lo Nanga, iya ze uwe Oh, ma lema owe Sani, sani Oh, ma lema owe E uwi reso, oh, esami Oh, mi tia lela, iya Oh, lela ni, la su ma pea lo Nanga, iya ze uwe Oh, ma lema owe Oh, no far Oh, uwi Su ma pea lo, ma la la, oh Ta me la ta Sa fiya ba fu sa, ma la la Na ha ma ya, oh Ma lo, oh Fia, sani, sani Oh, la la Oh, ze wa no so E uwi reso, oh, esami Oh, mi tia lela, iya Oh, lela ni, la su ma pea lo Nanga, iya ze uwe Oh, ma lema owe Oh, no far Su ma pea lo, ma la la Sa fiya ba fu sa, ma la la Na ha ma ya, oh Ma lo, oh Iya ola, oh Ze wa no so Oh, uwe Na ha ma ya, oh Ma lo, oh Iya ola, oh Ze wa no so Then sings my soul how great their art Last song for this morning Sings my soul This sings my soul My Savior God to me How great the world How great the world Sings This sings my soul My Savior God to me How great the world How great the world Oh, I can't sing one day When I'm with him I will sing I sing this song The words that I have to say I sing this song I sing this song I hear the roaring thunder I love you That you are It's my This sings my soul This sings my soul This sings my soul My Savior God to me How great How great the world How great How great the world This sings my soul I sing This sings my soul My Savior God to me How great How great the world How great the sound This song No ma letayao This song I love my God Na mi ka ze oye, no ma ni paola This song This song La ba uwe This song This song La ba uwe This song This song I love my God Ya ze oye, no ma ni paola This song This song La ba uwe This song La ba uwe This song I love my God Ya ze oye, no ma ni paola This song This song La ba uwe This song This song La ba uwe This song This song I love my God Ya ze oye, no ma ni paola This song This song La ba uwe 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 Ma li Bol yir ta tu ta sa ma yu boi toa E se pa matalava, uwi fiya duina Atonu Oto osirafia, motatu osirafia Ni fa, na benena tu ku yawa Ta tonu, e mo forta tu ruti Mo forta tu ma fofa, ni bea wo tu O se talaa fa no noa, i rekalesia A mai o se ta ba afi Tonga, tu rola Reso na to ruwa A mai se Afafine pe, soku luwa tausama A mai ni talaa Wole ma fa yo, masuku faa isinbea Iu na faa ta ma iya lewa, masoifua Tonga ta'vali sa fa peona ya, tonga ta'vali E fa tiyo Ta na fofa O la la, yala tu Aye Ta tu fa taile toa Iya, a mai se la La yo ta tu ose Ni ma lo noa Ta tu tu talu, woe la tonu, isifo yo, popa matia ono lofa Ma lo fa natula sa fa peona afia Onisi Sa halimatonu, sa halimafofa A mai ni fa matalava, onisi sa feo le sami chulotu Onisi, wole e se la benga Ta tu tu talu Oe la tonu, a mai se Ni ma lo fa natula sa fea ma ya Ta tu tu talu, motatu aina kalesia Ta tu outalbo, fa taile lofo letua O na wa, mai ta watu To'otelo ta tu, outalbo viya leli Ya fa pe na, no ta tu talu woe la tonu Te no, wai te ni ne, pitiari, le olango wa ya O no, outalbo, wai te ni ni Ate fa taile toa, fa taile no tausima Wuma fa yo, na, a ya tu no to'oteni manu, wa no ta tu talbo viya leli Sili motaku, talu letua Am ona merfa toa, merfa wa Ya fa, pe ma rosi ya wa Fa so ina, de aso, vale aso A wa la fa fo angali, ta tu ikalesia Ni na te ta tu ikalesia, a mai se outalbo, fa toa ide sa'pati Ta tu talu motatu ikalesia, na te li, lo loa ta tu ikalesia Tiutu ni faa, a mai se ta tu ma la Ya iya ipe la, na le yo letua, fa manu letua, la masilo ta ita, imalo soa ta Ya wa fo li Ta tu ikalesia ni Ote, menaao ya Si ka lima minute, talu poti ifo lo lotu Ta tu ma fofa, ta tu ma benga, a mai se outalbo Fa pele ma lo fa natula afia iya, soifua ma Ta tu tu talu, sinas, li lima skulu minute Etetetau lo, lotu poti ifa A mai, o no, ta ta ino lo ta tu se talu Ni ta tu ifo ma talu Yo va ue, lo ma tu, ta ma, tu kusilase, lo fiya lamki O yesu ke riso, lo ma toa li'i, lo ma ku fa'ola E la ba itu la ta'aya, lo sa'pati Ma tu tevi'i, ma fa'feta'ya, fa'feta'i lo fiyo O no, toe ma'ole, ba'fanga ma tu lo fiye, ma lo aina kalesia, ni tayao Fa'feta'wa, ma ea tu po, isova angali, ba tu poklami Sa fa pe'ona, fa soa, lo ona ni tayao Fa'feta'iti, ba inga, ba popo inga, mai no wa fioma Ni na tonu, ma tu, ta na ta ikalesia A fa'pitoa, lo ma tu, fa'feta'iti, o no, outalbo, pa'spok, ba tu fa'tas Ina yuso, ba tu fa'fina, wa siya si ma, na i fa'ana Ba tu fa'feta'iti, ma viya, ma tu molba'ina O no, ya na le ipe, molba tu, ile aso ma la Fa'feta'letua Inava yasu E uwi ina, sa ma tu Wa ai, fa'lo ulongo, inela tu, a pe ita Etangi uo ma tu luto O no, o se, talaa, fa ma fau sa fa pe'ona Latu, la rangi letua, lo ma tu to ma A ma tu te fa'feta'letua O no, lo wa fioma Wole surule, lo ma tu, wa ma lo ma la ma yo ma tu wa la Lo fa pe'ona, lo ma tu, fa soa, ile aso, ma le aso, viya, o letua, lo ma tu to fa A pa na le O ma tu, ta na ta'ile, ato toa yo, lo ma tu to ma Muo lo puo, lo ma tu loto, inelea la, ne la la E fa tu, tu na'ea, lo fiya pe'ta O lo wa lo fa O lo wa, le isiri siri, la va le, yo ma tu, ma tu te fa fo li, ta'elo, lo ma tu loku O no, lo tausina pe'a, ma le pe'e, yo ma tu lo fa'ana Ni tu la, lo sa'pati, fa'manu'ya letua, lo ma tu ai la, ba tu takua, ni tu la Ba tu fa'lo ulongo, sineso na ta'ua Sa fa pe'ona, foli, na lo ona letua Ya iya iya, la le lo fiyo Ni la ba tu, tu sa'ui letua, tu fa'lo ulongo ta ma La fa se fe'a, tu ita, ya i ma tu, a mai se outalbo Fiya iya i lo wa, na le, fa'manu'ya Fa'manu'ya, lo ma tu ai ikalesia letua Fa'pitoa, lo ma tu, fa'manu'ya ni tayao, o ona fa'fe'a, ya pasta, pa'na pa O iya, o lo fa pe'ona, fa'fe'a, molba tu, a mai se outalbo Na se opu, mai no wa fioma, lo fa pe'ona, ni na na le, tu la sa'pati, ya iya i lo wa Ni ya te ya fa'ua, u ya te ya ma Fa'manu'ya, fa'toa, merfa wa Ni fa'feta'letua, ma fa'fe'a Fa'manu'ya, ni dona A loe fa tonu, fa'ti na, tonu ikalesia Ya fa pe na, lo fa pe'ona, to fa'fa, ya merfa'te li, fa'toa, a mai se no fa Fa'manu'ya, lo te li ikalesia Su na ta ita, imalo, su na ta Ni na ta'ile, lo loa ikalesia, fa yo, ba'futa le, tu la sa'pati Ya iya i lo wa, ma le le letua, lo ma tu to ma Isifo, iwa fea, pa'spok, ba tu fe'ua, ni sa'pati Ya fa'manu'ya letua, ba tu ma fa Fa'pitoa Fa'manu'ya letua, ilao outalbo, pa'spok Wesi na fiya, ta ma, le yo la ma, merso ifua, lo ma tu ya To'otela, outalbo, wale toe Bea no, wale toe, ma'futa, lo fiyo, a fa'feta'i Fa'feta'i, ilao outalbo, ni pa'spok Wuma fa yo, na ma tu, jesua Ma tu fetufa, ta na tu, ma lo mo'la, ya la mai no wa fioma Ni fa'manu'ya te li, latu letua, lo ma tu to ma Ni fa'manu'ya, ni ma tu, sa ringa, ni sa'pati letua Na se opu, mai no, ku'una la, fa pe'ona, fa soa Ya la le lo fiyo letua, lo ma tu to ma E se be wa le, ma ua lo ma tu, ta'osirafia ta ma, fa'lo, wale, utu wa yo, ma la ni La baswa fa ma tu tu fa, tu e se ya tu, ma la na, fa mo'la Fa fa yesu, ma tu wale, ma lo ko'ne, a beni, ma beni Ote, fa'manu'ya, su ma tiato, motatu, ta tu ta'va'la, ofo, a mai se ta tu suva Bol e su ma tiato, pa'mo'fo, no ta tu ta'va'la, suva Ta sumta Letua fa'feta'i Ta'va'la, soku wa e, ma tu Ta fori bi ina yeti oye letua A mai ya no ma tu, lo fiyo, le ba yasu letua, ma tu fa'feta'i, fa'feta'wa, o letua, siri siri Pa'na iya, le isuwa, ita'va'la, letua, bo'ra na, ilugo lewa bo'ra Ute ye, o cha'ata, ni ta'li ni Ya wa iya, ni na ta'la tu, e fa Ni ma tu ta'va'la, yesu, u su, ape It's now time for our children's story So I would like to call your boys, come up And thank you so much for taking our children's story today All the kids, thank you Okay, so far Watched it in the show, we'll be playing a video So, yeah
The story of Jannah Jannah was a prophet of God He would spread God's word everywhere, unto everyone But for this command that God had given him This story had an unexpected turn of events You see, God had said "Threatening above, for these people need to hear my word" But Jannah remembered "Aren't these the same people?" "They keep on fighting each other and causing violence around the city" "They're not all about it" "And then, run away" "While he was running away" "God was right behind him the whole time" "He got on the ship" "But, um, it did not end well for them" "This storm had happened because of Jannah's disobedience" "So God had sent a storm to get his attention" "But even during the storm" "He had fell asleep, but not hear a single thing" "So they had woken him up and started casting lots" "When they found out it was him" "Jannah had said" "Throw me off the boat, and the sea will be armed" "But they would not listen" "And first, they had tried to throw everything off the boat" "So that the boat had not seen" "It did not work, so, they threw him off" "And prayed that they wouldn't be punished for this man's death" "When Jannah was in the sea" "God had not forgotten about him" "And sent a big fish to swallow him" and sent a big fish to swallow him. Jonah had been in there for about three days. During those three days, Jonah had prayed to God for forgiveness and salvation. And he swore that he would do whatever God commands. Soon enough, Jonah was spit out of the mouth of the big fish, more happier than ever, to spread God's word. The meaning of the story is to believe that we should do whatever God commands us to do. And not only that, but to preach God's word to those who don't deserve it. Because God loves us all and wants us all to feel His love. Thank you for listening and have a good day. Okay, it's a summary of the story of the song. We should preach God's word to those who really who must and theirs who don't deserve it. Like people that bully us in our minds, peace and hope should spread out. God's word to them so they get to feel God's love as well.
Ta'we'esa amen etatu ta'aseweti amen. I just got told here that Tala wrote all those pictures. He drew those pictures. And he even spoke about that story. Uh, so thank you so much for the gifts and talents of our young people, so talented and gifted. Thank you so much for the worship this story. Pa'pe'fo'ia ta'atu ta'usana. De'be'fayio ro'tato. Ma'ofoli ma'fa'ne'fana ile'ala'anga. So this last session that we're going to go through this morning talks about something very important. What must I do to be saved? What must I do to be saved? If there's any question, any human being asked in this world is what must I do to be saved? There's a story where every soldier that goes to war, there's a chaplain that comes to him just before he's about to pass away. And out of all the questions that they ask as a chaplain is, uh, does anybody know what verse the chaplain actually reads before a soldier passes away? Have a guess. If anyone guesses it, where's Jock with it? I think they've been up prize. Does anybody know the chapter that the, the, the chaplain says to the person before they pass away? Have a guess. Okay, it is Psalms 23. Psalms 23, "When I walk through the valley of death, I will fear no evil, for you are with me." It said, they read this and they said to them, they said to them, "Are you saved?" And the person that is there says, "I want to be saved." In those dying moments, what must I do to be saved? And we will find out what the question will be, but before we do, let me just say a prayer for us this morning. Lord, what must I do to be saved? And how do I become saved in this world? Lord, we just want to pray that as we go through our study, our session this morning, as we learn more about who you are and what you want us to do in our lives, we ask Lord that your Spirit will be with us now in Jesus' name, we pray. Amen. And amen. Last night, we talked about something very, very important. We talked about the origins of sin. And this is the problem that we have because sin separates us from who? From God. Sin separates us from God. And this is the problem, the sin problem that we have. When God created a perfect world, Adam and Eve were what? Sinless. In a peace with the universe. I think we mentioned this morning that we want God's peace. So this is what they had. Adam and Eve were in a perfect world, they were perfect. And Adam and Eve were what? Sinless. They had no sin. And they were in a peace with the universe. Genesis chapter 1, verses 27 and 28, can we read this together? Ready, one, two. So God created mankind in His own image. In the image of God, He created them. Male and female, He created them. And God blessed them and said to them, "Be fruitful and increase in number, fill the earth and subdue it, rule over the fish in the sea and the birds in the sky and over every living creature that moves on the ground." Praise the Lord. They were in a perfect environment because they were sinless. But here's the, the challenge for us this morning. As we look that sin destroyed our fellowship with God and ruined our relationship with Him. Sin destroyed our fellowship with God and we run from where? His presence. We run from His presence. Ta'to fa'ita'fu'le bolle ile'tenese'utaku'chon. Fa'ipuvanu. If you have your Bible, so few tenese. Chonu fa'ipuvanu. Apaimo bomo ta'to fa'ita'fu'le bolle. Tasu. So young people, can we read this in English? Ready, one, two. Then the bear and his wife heard the sound of the Lord God as he was walking in the garden in the cool of the day. And they hid from the Lord God among the trees of the garden. The first thing that they did was what? They hid from the presence of the Lord. I want us to picture this, that God's presence was with them every single day in the garden of Eden. When you use the word presence, it means that someone is with us. Someone is in the presence of ourselves. But it says here that they hid from God and they hid in the trees and in the gardens in the cool of the day because of what they had done. One of the most challenging things for us is that how do we continue to hide from God? And why do we hide from God? Well, the answer is this. It's because sin separates us from God. Sin separates us from God. But I want us to show you this morning, what is the cure for the sin? What is the cure for our sin this morning? And what can we do to make sure that we continue to trust in God's promises? It says here, the cure for sin. Jesus was punished for our sins so we could be redeemed and restored back to God. Romans 5:21. Can we read this together? Ready, one, two. So that just as sin reigns in death, so also grace might reign through righteousness to bring eternal life through Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen. Praise the Lord. So just as one sin, we have Christ as His righteousness that brings eternal life through who? Through Jesus Christ. Praise the Lord that we have someone that is righteous. Someone that died for each and every one of us that we have the cure for sin. We have the cure for sin and that is the sacrifice of Jesus Christ. The Bible also says here, we are saved from the penalty and power of sin by the act of grace. We can contribute nothing towards our salvation. Now, I want us to think about this word here, grace. The word grace means grace receives, accepts and cleanses every single one of us. Amen. Olle'ofu tu'lu'ana'ala le'tua. That He forgives every single thing that we've done. And I'm so grateful that God doesn't punish us for the sins that we've done. Because some sins are greater than others. But He doesn't do that. Why is it? Because of grace. Because of God's amazing grace. Ephesians 2:8 and 9. Can we read this together? Ready, one, two. "For it is by grace you have been saved through faith, and this is not from yourselves; that is a gift of God, not by works, so that no one can what?" Praise, praise the Lord. Olle'la'ofu le'tua. Olle'la'ofu tu'lu'ana'ala. It is a gift that no one should boast because no one can save themselves. Not even one because one is righteous. The only person that is righteous is our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. And this morning, I want us to even talk about this and to think about this. These are some of the questions I want you to think about. Share with the person next to you, what brings happiness to your life? What brings happiness to your life? And the next question is, what brings purpose and meaning to your life? After you hear about this, what, what must I do to be saved? I want you to talk to the person next to you. Share with them what brings happiness to your life? And what brings purpose and meaning to your life? So turn to the person next to you and discuss your questions. Okay, I think we'll start with here. So two from this side and two from this side. What brings happiness to your life? And what brings purpose and meaning to your life? So I will start. Yeah, anyone from this side? Yeah.
Um, so the thing that brings happiness to me and others' life is mere I. Makes me very happy. Um, but in reality, what brings happiness to my life is waking up with a God's praise.
Amen.
Um, what brings purpose and meaning to my life is um, family.
Amen, family?
Yeah. And God's thank you.
Amen. Thank you so much. I think the first thing you said was food, eh? I think food is, it brings us so much happiness. Okay, and one more from this side here, yeah? Uh, Cece. To'liya Cece.
Ya'asi ipa'ya chutani'ala uso si'asine'ala fe'mayala le'ama'ua'iti'ati'ala lo'ala'anga o'ye'su.
Amen.
Afe'me'ipole'ala le'ama'ua'ya'ile'wi'ana ma'fa'mu'muena lo'ala'anga'ala'ali fe'me'alti'ala'lo'ye'su'ala fe'ongale'tua.
Amen. Ta'ala. Okay, so we got this side here, any? Two from this side? Yeah, uh, Jerome, Mr. Jerome? Thank you.
The thing that brings, um, happy my life is that I try to do my best to show, show, um, God's word. Um, through myself, but not just through my actions, but through my, um, ability to, um, connect with another person. And myself, you know, I'm not a hundred percent on, um, with my spirit to work, but to try and do my best each and every day, that's what makes me happy.
Amen. Praise God. Okay, and then we've got one more from this side. Anyone else? Any volunteer? Yeah.
Yeah, it's one, only one happiness in life. Love.
Amen.
If you love God, keep His commandments. If you love, keep, stick to Jesus Christ. Not an apesu. Lord. Pray to, to God every day. And that's happiness.
Thank you. Ta'ala. Thank you for sharing. I really appreciate that. I, I, I wrote this question here. Maybe I should have changed the, the word because what's the difference? Ol'ana esesingole'lo'ole'ole' happiness, le'joy. Happiness and joy. So ole', ole'oli', ole' happiness, ole'ifi'fi'ha, is that correct? What's the difference? Yes. Did I answer? Yeah. Well done. Hmm, okay. Did you hear that? So there is a difference between happiness and joy. Happiness is the pursuit of the wealth. And joy is the fruit of the spirit. So the big difference is that joy, even though we go through trials and tribulations and sufferings, it says that joy comes in the morning. Be'ana'ua. Even though we go through hardships, knowing that hardships won't last forever. Because the only thing that lasts forever is God's word and God's word is eternal. There's a story in the Bible that talks about a, a young man who is rich. A young man that has everything. It's a familiar story. It's a story that everybody understands, but also it's a story that we hear all over the world. Where people are wealthy, people are rich. They have their homes, their cars, their boats, their planes, their buildings, their swimming pools. Every single thing that they have. And so many of their friends love them because they're wealthy, they have so much wealth. But in the end, when everything is gone or they are still not content. They are still not content. Which means they want every single thing, but nothing can fill their desires, their hearts. And when everything is gone, when everything has, everyone has left them, the only thing that can fill our hearts is Jesus. That's the only thing that can give us pure joy. Because the joy of the Lord is in our hearts and in our minds today. That's only if we accept Him. And that brings us purpose and meaning in our lives today. One of the challenges that I face today, and I want us to do this exercise. Now that I am a father, my children are seven and six. By the time they get to twenty-seven or twenty-six, I'll be seventy-two. I'll be 72. Now, I want you to add 20 years onto your life now. Add it onto your life. I want you to think about your age. Add 20 years onto your life now. If you had one piece of advice that you would give to somebody when you add 20 years on top of your life, what would that be? But, is anyone, I think he mentioned already, 62, so he's the oldest here now. I want you to just think about that. If you add 20 years onto your life and see your children grow up, what's one advice that you will give to your children? I want you to think about that. One of the main things I want us to leave for our session today, and I've got three verses to, to close. If there's one advice that I'll give to our children, is to take hold of Christ. To take hold of Christ. We must believe, we must trust in Jesus Christ because of the, the gift of salvation that He gives to us today. If there's any advice that I'd like to give anyone here, is that we have the gift of salvation and that we must believe in Jesus Christ. Because it says here in Acts 16:30, can we read this together? One, two. "He then brought them out and asked, 'Sirs, what must they be saved?' They replied, 'Believe in the Lord Jesus, and you will be saved, you and your household.'" The man wasn't asking the apostle Paul and Barnabas, "What must I do for just me to be saved? But what must I do for my whole family to be saved?" And our children are not with us. What's the point? And so the answer is here, believe in the Lord Jesus. And then it says here, "You will be saved, you and your whole household." We must keep telling our children about Jesus Christ, that they'll never forget the teachings that we leave with them, because when they grow up, they will continue to be strong in the Lord Jesus. To take hold of God. Because remember, we talked about last night, that they were trying to take hold of us. And so it's a tug of war. It's Jesus or it's the world. It's Jesus or it's the world. But take hold of Jesus, because that's our only hope that we have in this world. The challenge is too, one of the most important things here, it says that repentance is turning away from sin and returning to Jesus, putting our trust in Him. Acts 2:37-38, can we read this together? Ready, one, two. "When the people heard this, they were cut to the heart and sent to Peter and the apostles, other apostles, 'Brothers, what shall we do?' Then Peter replied, 'Repent and be baptized, every one of you, in the name of Jesus Christ, for the forgiveness of your sins, and you will receive the gift of the Holy Spirit.'" Because sometimes our hearts are so hard and our minds are so clouded that we reject God's Word. But it says here, I like the word here, "But when they heard the Word of God, their hearts were cut." Their hearts were cut because they had heard the Word of God, and the Word of God opened their hearts and their minds to receive God's Word. Even the hardest of the hearts can receive God's Word. Maybe your heart this morning is so hard that we can't receive God's Word this morning, but God's Word is sharper than any two-edged sword. God's Word is so, so sharp that it can cut the heart open that you receive His, the blood that He shared for you and me on that cross. And that He wants us to come to Him today. We can know we have eternal life when we trust in Jesus Christ. Amen. I'm going to ask our praise and worship to come forth. In 1 John, chapter 5, verse 11 to 13. And this is the testimony. God has given us eternal life, and this life is in His Son. Whoever has the Son has what? Has life. Whoever does not have the Son of God does not have life. Whoever has the Son has what? Has life. Whoever does not have the Son of God does not have life. Would you like to have life this morning? Amen? Let me ask you another question. Would you like to have God's life? There's a difference between life here on earth, but God's life is eternal. Who is Jesus to you? And what must I do to be saved? My prayer this morning, that God would continue to open our hearts to believe in the Lord Jesus Christ, to trust in Him, to repent, and to receive the Holy Spirit in your hearts today. Knowing that God has a plan for each and every one of us. Plans to prosper you and not to harm you. Plans to give you hope and a future in Jesus Christ. Amen. Lord, I want to thank you so much for the blessings that we know how we can be saved today. By moving away and running away from our sins and repenting, Lord, and asking you to come into our hearts today. As, Lord, as heads are bowed and eyes are closed, we just pray that your Spirit will help us to make the right decision, Lord. To be followers of you, to be followers of your work, that we can receive you unto our own, Lord. Lord, we just pray a special prayer for our church. Lord, we need your guidance. We need your spirits leading in our homes, with our children, with our families, Lord, and with your church here in Pachamol. Because when you lead us, Lord, we receive guidance and blessings. When we open our hearts to you, Lord, we know that we are living a life worthy of praise and honor. We pray that you will bless us now, guide us, and keep us safe as we continue to, to live a life worthy of you. Bless us now, we ask this in Jesus' wonderful precious name, we pray. Amen.